That's a lot of fence. Well, you wanted yours bet by Corky. I said the fence off there.
No, no, no. It's not by Corky.
Everybody's phones turned off? Everybody's phones turned off or take yours, whichever?
Yes, sir.
Like to call Rick for the city meetings or everybody, police staff for the flagellants?
Flagellants to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, an individual with liberty and justice for all.
At this time is our open public forum. Anybody wishing to address the council? So be it at this time. Seeing nobody, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening. The three things in yellow are the only updated items.
So number seven really isn't an addition, it's just taking it from 10D and moving it up. Kevin has to get back to the arena for some events that are happening down there. So we're trying to push him up a little.
Earlier. You guys don't mind, can we just move that up to number four?
Just do it right away, that way he can get going?
If that's alright with everybody.
The order doesn't shouldn't make any difference as long as they're here.
Yep.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the agenda is given to us this evening.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Foes? Carry. Department head, Kevin Mooney. Right away. Good evening, council. Have a great day on today. Beautiful day outside. We'll start off with arena. We are in operation right now. We have ice down and kids are skating. We started the ice process on September 15th. That's when we started the refrigeration and our first ice was on the 26th of September. So in 11 days, we go from a warm floor to skaters on the, in the building. So that was the 15-over tournament and that went really well. We had guys from all over the state, even Wisconsin, and it went really well. We had pretty good, fairly good weather at startup and ice in. Temperature's a little warm, but the air was dry. So that's a big deal to us. It's humidity and dew points are big for us. Right now, the refrigeration system and the Zamboni are working really well. We did change out the bearings on the auger system for the Zamboni. And that's running great right now. So that was some work we did on our own. We have received a lot of compliments on the improvements that we made to the arena over the summer. People are really happy with the painting that was done in the arena area and then the bleacher work that was done as well. I already mentioned the 15-over tournament. Right now, we have youth hockey and figure skating participating, skating, doing activities at this time. They are following our, the protocols that we put into place with 25 skater pods. They don't intermingle during their ice time on the ice, a maximum of 50 kids on the ice. Figure skating had a pretty good recruiting season. So their numbers are up a little bit. It makes it a little tricky for them with the ice, but they do know that they have to pay attention to what their ice time is, how many kids are on a section of ice at a time during their instructions. As far as open skating goes, I did a little investigating with some places around us. And the MAC and Burnix Arena over in Saratelle, they're following the youth organization model, which is 25 kids on the ice. So as it stands right now, we're limiting open skating to the first 25 people that come into the building. We've only had one open skating. Usually the first open skating isn't great. People aren't in tune with it yet. So we didn't reach our 25. I think we had like 18 kids on the ice, 18 kids and adults on the ice. So we are not using locker rooms at this time, except for goaltenders. They get a locker room because they have all that equipment they have to put on. It's difficult for them to do outside of the ring. So only goalies are using locker rooms at this time. So high school hockey, the word did come down late last week that high school, they're gonna get a later start. Normally, like the girls' high school team would start the last week of October. The girls' season has been pushed back one month. They will start on the 30th of November. Boys' high school, which usually starts around the second week of November, is actually only affected by one week. They'll be starting on the 23rd of November. They will be playing a maximum of 18 competitions per team. So between the boys and the girls, they'll each play 18 competitions. Hopefully, half of them are away, half of them are home, and we've got that going. Right now, there is, there are no spectators for high school competitions. So it's not normal. We know that. You know, do we like the building full of people, pep and popcorn and hot dogs going out? Absolutely, we do. But we are, we are progressing and we are making some things happen then. There is talk about an extended holiday break, but we're not sure if that's gonna happen right now. They're only playing during the week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. That's the plan. And a maximum of two competitions per week. So we are up and running and we have one staff member that we brought on this year. Otherwise, we had a lot of returning staff, lost a couple guys, replaced a couple guys with a single guy. And that's Nate Kingman. You guys approved him at the last meeting and he's training. And he did his first Zamboni by himself last Saturday evening. So, and what I mean by himself, I was riding along with him. So he's not ready to go yet. We usually do like a three-week training program with new Zamboni drivers. We're only carrying two concession staff right now. The only time we're opening concessions is for open ice. So open skating, open hockey, we have to have a method of collecting money. They are entering through the lobby. The lobby is roped off. It's just basically an entry, the pay, and get out to the rink. We are sanitizing all the time. Our fogger is coming. Very handy. We're constantly going around after kids have vacated an area and sanitizing and fogging an area of the rink. So we're doing a lot of that. We'll move on to parks. Oh, I just want to let everybody know that our open ice sessions, like open hockey, open skating, youth open hockey, and most of our major events are on the city of Richmond's website on our calendar. We don't put normal practices and stuff on there. There's just no need for that. But if there's an event where we want the public to know that they can come to the rink, that's on our city website. Centennial and Royals Parks will be closed and winterized. I've got blowout scheduled for the last week of October. We're still utilizing the facilities out at Centennial Park. Didn't you just recently use them in Kinderly? Yeah, you had a nice little event out there.
Oh, no, actually, we got with that on another location.
Oh, okay, okay.
They're still using you.
So we'll continue to clean and sanitize the pavilion out there as well as the trail pavilion. And we'll do that throughout the winter months too. The fogger has been very helpful. It, we're using it in parks, in the arena, in locker rooms, in the arena itself, all over the place. So it's been a very helpful tool for us. We did some work on the outdoor skating rink. The one thing that we're probably projecting for the outdoor skating rink is no warming house this year. Small building, a lot of people congregating in a small area, which is the reason why we have locker rooms and lobby closed at the arena. So once it looks like we can start making some ice, we'll remove all of the dog park stuff, the hydrant and all the obstacles and the signage and everything. We'll take and put that in storage and then we'll put ice in there. I'm kind of surprised at how much use that place is getting. I didn't really think it would be that much. There's a lot of dogs running around. There's not multiple dogs running around, but there's, you know, a person coming with their dog. It always seems like there's somebody in there with their dog. So it's kind of, it's kind of nice to see. It's a, it's a good little, good little addition to our, our program. As far as nature park goes, the portable toilet will be taken out at the end of October. And yeah, that place just kind of sits and waits. We did do our, our final grass cutting, mowing of the year. We did that this week. So today, we finished up on cutting everything in town, trails. Everything got cut Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. And the mower will be serviced, get away for the season. And then, yeah. Moving on to the Recoray Trail, we had a meeting last week. Really, the only reason why we met was because the, we're gonna work with the Country Snow Cruisers about using the stretch of undeveloped trail between Cold Spring and Rockville for them. They want to use that as the, the main run. And the, the board agreed to allow that as long as they were doing improvements. There's, if you've driven past it, it's on the right-hand side if you're heading west. And there's a lot of brush, a lot of tree work that needs to be done. They have agreed to do that work. And then they're gonna do some slight grading work as well. Not anything super, just kind of take out some of the rough spots. And then they will groom that once we start getting snow. So everything, everything with the construction of that phase three is sitting down at the Capitol right now. We're hoping that, that down there, the legislature will start to push forward with plans to move ahead with everything. You know, Sarah can make some plans on, on how we're gonna do 2021. You know, we're spending a lot of time on 2022, understandably. As it stands right now, our next trail meeting is Thursday, November 5th at Rockville. Unless we get some word out of St. Paul, we probably won't have that meeting. We're just waiting to see. I have one other thing I'd like to talk about. Last year, we purchased a piece of land up in the northwest corner.
That's probably been two years, all were ago.
I wrote 19, it's probably 18. We purchased a small piece of land up on the northwest corner of town at the corner of Sixth Street Northwest and Cedar Avenue Northwest. The intent of that purchase, you guys all remember, was to put a neighborhood playground in there. The Richmond American Legion has expressed interest in partnering with the city to design and build that playground. So what we would like to do at this time, you can do it at any time. I mean, you don't have to have a vote and whatever right now. But we would, we're proposing a park called the Richmond American Legion Park. And allow us to begin working on design concepts for the playground and the area. It's not a big, it's not a big lot. Probably gonna be a small playground, some benches. And that's, you know, so a lot of things you can do there. But it will be a really nice addition to the northwest side of town. We really don't have anything like that up there. If you've got a four, five, six, seven-year-old, you're walking them either to the schools or to Centennial if you want to go to the playground. So the, the Legion, the Legion will be making, I think today, a donation to that park. We'll probably talk about it later on. And we just want to start some concepts, look at some playground plans, try to get a budget put together, and then work on how we're going to accomplish filling that budget with funds. So it's time to start moving on it. And their donation will actually kind of help us kick that off.
Great.
Any questions, council members?
Back up to the trail system, please.
Recoray Trail.
Correct. You're saying that does the three municipalities own the stretch property from Cold Spring to Rockville?
Yes, we do.
With that, then how are you going to, is it going to be an approved trail?
Eventually, it's designed.
This winter?
No, it will be an unapproved trail.
So an unapproved trail, then people may be on there with four-wheelers and everything else?
It's posted, no motorized vehicles except snowmobiles. We have the signage already and that will be what will be posted. It will be groomed as, as a snowmobile trail.
I just want to make clear for the people that have been using it for four-wheeling.
Well, I mean.
You know, that when does this really take place to be an official snowmobile trail?
Once we get signage down that claims that it's closed. Once we get signage up that states snowmobile use only, and we have snow.
Okay, because there could be a lot of questions there. You've got snowmobilers versus four-wheelers.
No, I hear ya.
That's whole two different groups of people.
It is. Not that much.
And along with that, you kept on saying that we bought the property on Cedar and Sixth. I think it was Cedar and Sixth.
Right.
Who's we?
The city.
For clarification.
The city of Richmond purchased that.
There we go. Thank you. Okay, and would it be out of line to ask for a, to ask for a drawing prior to naming it? And prior to, you know, have the legions come up to what they have? And then let's take a look at, and then we're gonna make a, a public relations spiel with this and pictures of it before we go ahead and saying, yes, this is what we're gonna name it? Yes, I see that they're donating a nice chunk of change, which is, I very much appreciate in the city. But I would like to see a long-range plan, or at least a, just similar to what we did in Centennial. We had before, before we even purchased it, or just right after they purchased it. Then they came in, they planned it, and then they named it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not a problem. That's.
That was our initial plan until we received a check that we weren't expecting.
Yeah, we were a little surprised by that. So.
So.
Yeah.
That would be a pinky count.
Anything else, guys?
Nope.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks a lot, Kevin. You too.
At this time, we'll move up, back up to number four, approval of beating minutes from September 2nd and September 24th. Is there any questions or comments on those, on those minutes? If not, I'd look for a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Period. Approval of Bill's plan. Any, anything stick out? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve.
My second.
We have a motion on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Period. Consent agenda this evening, resolution 161-20, approval of September 2020 journal entries. Item B is resolution 162-20, approval of donation and contribution for September 2020, which is the American, Richmond American Legion, and that's an attune of $5,000. Item C is approval of 2020 prosecution contract. Item D is acceptance of people's service September 2020 report. The approval of 2020 prosecution contract came from the court system asking, so when something happens in Richmond and the police department moves it forward, that we're approving that they're, they're agent of service.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda is delivered.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Period. Move on to number eight for this evening, road closure permit application.
Mr. Mayor, council, Tessa. Chad and I are here before you because we would like to request a road closure on October 30th from roughly 4:00, 5:00 until midnight. Chad approached me this spring to put on an event where we would perform for the community that was hit by COVID and stuff like that, get them out in the environment. And after River Lake Days was shut down, push harder and harder. So what we have done is we've gotten some sponsorships to go ahead and put on an event of two bands. We have found insurance to cover for it. We're gonna get with Chief Bloom and Tessa for how to fence off the area properly. But what we are wanting to do is have the bars open, allow to purchase items inside the bars and walk out into the enclosed area. We are looking at having several volunteers from the fire department to the sponsors and others to help monitor. I believe the police department will help out a little bit also. And so we hope to have it well and controlled. I know that we need to maintain 250 or less, which I believe we'll be able to do. Those that are purchasing alcohol need to purchase inside the bars. Will be carded and have wristbands put on them to help us to control as we are monitoring who is drinking and who shouldn't be. Other than that, we are asking for permission to have the road closure so we may have this event. Again, that's October 30th.
Just one correction on, on your application. It says 3:00 PM to 1:30. That gives you a start time of setup.
It's the setup that, and I would, probably not the entire road would be fenced off at 3:00 PM, but the section from probably Plantburgs to Corky's and up to there, probably, probably let it so you can get in their parking lot. But where the stage is gonna be is, is gonna, the setup's gonna have to start at 3:00 to 7:00. Just to make sure that we have enough time to get everything set up before 7:00 o'clock when the music actually starts. Then probably approximately 6:00, then we probably close the rest of the road off. But I've spoken, we've spoken to all the businesses that will be affected by that closure, including Plantberry, Sharon's Gifts.
I just wanted to mention the 3:00 because for the record, that way.
I apologize, I misspoke. We've been, we were kicking around for a while.
On the backside, there is a map of what they want to close off when it's all said and done. So virtually the two-block corridor from Grant to Central.
Grant to Central, yeah. Where's the stage gonna be set up?
It's gonna be right in front of Corky's. You might be able to see that. I don't know. Just a little rectic angle. It'll be facing Eastbound, just the sound, that'd be the best place for the sound not to echo.
Okay, so it'll go that way?
Yes. We have to donate a trailer, so it would be moved in relatively easy. And then once they're done, we should be able to just pull the trailer up. In the 12:30 end time, that's just so, the music's, the 1:30 end time. But that's just for the tear down. Music should be, will be done at midnight with exactly the same.
And I guess my question pertaining to this, is this, is this just, is this benefiting anything just directly in general? Or is this just to, because we've, we've had such a tough time during the whole COVID-19 thing? This might be able to bring a little bit more people into town per se for, for businesses, bars, so forth and so on, correct?
Yes, because when we started, started doing this, we, we just talked about this, there's still snow on the ground. We didn't think it would last this long. So now here we are at the end of October, which we're gonna be taking a real risk with the weather, obviously.
Yeah. That was my next question too, if, if something weather-related. Obviously, we can deal with the cold and everything else that may occur. But if something would be considering, obviously, a rain out, would you just then just have to end up canceling the event? Or is that what you would look at doing? Okay.
Unless we, I, I like, I mean, we're kind of running out of time if we'd have to move it.
No, understandable. Yep, understandable.
We're just hoping to get Rocky, then it's one of those.
They like that name would be great. Yeah, exactly.
We are entirely, they call it Rock Out on Main Street. So we're looking at advertising on both sides and then on Corky's bar. A benefit to it probably is towards the bars because they lost out, because they were shut down for several weeks. Plus also lost out on River Lake Days. We're also inviting Bregelmanns in Plantenburg so that they're able to sell food on the side, on both sidewalks to help them out. But in essence, what we're just trying to do is the community to get them out, sponsor, you know. Obviously, we're gonna be handing out masks, telling them to practice social distancing the best that we can. If the numbers decide to rise for us during that time, obviously, we're gonna pull it. So we're gonna follow the guidelines of what's your set. But it's just, it's in essence to just get people out to just have fun and socialize, help benefit the bars and the local community.
Okay.
You mentioned you have liability insurance for this, or have insurance was quoted, I believe. What type of insurance do you have to cover against the COVID-19?
No insurance covers COVID.
So as anybody watched their news this evening, and even at 6:00, the state of Wisconsin has cut down their bars and restaurants to 25% rather than the 50% because of the outbreak in Wisconsin.
Correct.
Wisconsin, North and South Dakota, plus Iowa is all shown on a map being hotspots of the Midwest. I'm not trying to play this down, but I'll tell you what, I'm all in favor of this type of thing. But is it the time is the question? And if the state of Minnesota follows Wisconsin at 25% of capacity, who's going to monitor those establishments? And our law enforcement is here. If these people are gonna be drinking on the street, do we have to amend our rules because you cannot have an open container on, on public grounds, I believe? So that's a discussion on this here.
The first part, as far as inside the bars, that's the bar ownership, their responsibility to maintain that. Obviously, we're gonna follow Governor Walz's guidelines. Right now, I believe it's 250. If he drops that number, obviously, we will warrant what we need to decide to do. If the numbers in the county of Stern's spike, we have no problem pulling the event at the last minute. But as far as Wisconsin and all that, I think those numbers apply to inside businesses and stuff like that.
Correct, it's 25% in the deadness. But how are you gonna, how are you gonna monitor that or how are they gonna monitor that? You say you have firefighters and other volunteers that are gonna be watching these areas. Isn't that basically making our emergency staff available for contamination?
So I will retract my statement of asking volunteers from the fire department to help.
I'm just saying, and this is a, this is a discussion-type thing.
Then let me answer your question.
There's a lot of legalities here that it's not just slam dunk. Now, I'm truly in favor of having these type of events. I'm just saying is, one thing, is this the time? And if it is, how much? And how, who's gonna have the scrutiny over some areas, including law enforcement on the street? So can anybody answer those questions?
As far as the alcohol on the street, my understanding is the insurance covers it for the alcohol out there as long as it's a fenced-in area and it's monitored with one entrance, one exit, similar to River Lake Days. As long as the council approves it, as far as city ordinance-wise, that would be good enough for our department.
And I talked to both bar owners prior to this, when we talked about having this. And both of them said they would monitor their own properties because they obviously do it every day. So they were both fine with it, just they wanted the city to approve to have the event. Then they'll worry about their bar individually.
Will there be any signage up that enter at your own risk, please? Due to the COVID-19? I mean, it's, it's one of these things is how people say if they don't, if they feel not secure, they probably shouldn't show up. I understand that. But I also understand there've been weddings in the area and funerals in the area. It's been hitting St. Cloud Times in Minneapolis. News that it's spreading very thoroughly through Sterns County. So I hope everybody takes this very seriously. Yes, I believe in getting out. I believe in, in people have been restrained for too long. But do we really have a choice? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else have any comments on this event? What does council wish to act? We need to inform the motion.
I make a motion to approve the so-called Rock on Main Street or Rock whatever.
That's the only thing we have to approve is that we're gonna close the road. The rest of it is on them. So.
Okay, approve the closure of the road as long as they prepare all the necessary items, such as law enforcement, closing it properly, well, as the permit applies.
I'll second that. Go ahead, Kimberly.
We have a motion on the second. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Good luck, fellas.
Yes, good luck.
I'll give a sign and send over Sterns County for final.
Thanks, guys.
Our next item up is Tremendous Night. I believe they're just wanting to know if, if they're still able to go ahead with it.
Well, from what I was told, they're, at this time, still talking about doing Tremendous Night. It's very modified. We don't know, they don't know all their details yet, but at this time, they're saying no parade, no Santa, pretty much nothing on Main Street. They would like to do. They would like to do something where they can get together in an area and do prepackaged type, whether it's the cookies, the ornaments, things of that sort. People can do like a drive-through type event, but they're still trying to figure out where that would happen, the more fine details of it. But the biggest thing that they're wanting to know is if they have something of that sort, does the council still want to do hot dogs?
We still, it's December 4th, right?
It would be December 4th, yeah.
That's what I thought.
They still obviously have a lot of planning in front of them with this being modified. Like I said, they have absolutely no fine details of anything, it's still kind of throwing ideas up in the air. So, but one thing they were just wondering, if they move forward with planning and advertising and such, if they'll be the hot dogs.
Well, you know, I think overall in general, you know, the Tremendous Night has, has been a really positive thing for the city of Richmond. I think you get a lot of great feedback from a lot of people pertaining to it. It seems to give them some type of warm feeling, let's just say that so to speak, when they're out on a, it may be a little cooler out or whatever. It just gets them out for at least something for the winter. But I think from the standpoint, we would have to continually look at where all these numbers may be coming from with the COVID-19 stuff happening. Like Pat was saying, you know, are the numbers going to keep spiking a little bit more? Or are they going to eventually start going down a little bit? That's all, that's been up in the air, it's, it's all over the place, there's no question about it.
There are a lot of that.
But I think if, I think there would be if it, I think that the city, I suppose, if we were going to do something again, like a hot dog deal like we were doing in a pot, like we've done over the past few years, obviously, we would have to again, to follow the rules and regulations of the, you know, marking off areas six feet apart. People have to wait, we have to make sure that we wear masks, gloves, so forth and so on, to keep everything, everything, you know, safe in general. So if that's the case, and we can all abide by that and follow that, I really don't see a problem, you know, with, with moving forward with it is, you know, it's going to be a little, it's going to be a little different in general. You know, like they said, you know, and because of all the things that cannot be done. So, yeah, so I'm, I guess moving forward, if, if we're going to do it, I would, I would say that we should hold the bar into with the hot dogs and the pot that we've done over the past years. Just my feeling.
If we can, when I say that, they're limiting any food delivered in non-closure items. So it has to be prepackaged items.
Yeah, then we probably would have to, we have to individually wrap every one before we hand it to them.
It has to be done in a certified kitchen, you know, this type of thing. And it just, it kind of goes on and on, but. But then we're looking at the health of our taxpayers, you know?
Yep.
Again, I'm all in favor of these community activities. But when I hear that so-and-so has, has COVID-19, and these people had coffee with them, and these people had, and these people, it scares the heck out of me when it comes to them. And skipping one year isn't that bad to do that. I don't know. I am, I'm torn in between right in the center personally, because I know that the restrictions that are coming down on myself and my concession type of unit are going to, life has changed. The world has changed. And doing anything outside with this type of open thing, we're going to have to get the, make a call to Sterns County Health Department to find out what can or cannot be done because, you know, if something happens, they always think the city has the biggest, deepest pocket.
Yep, 100% correct.
You know, so. Again, I'm all in favor of this, think it's a great idea, it has been a great idea for how many years it's been going. Breaks up the monotony of the cold or the holiday season, but we have to look at safety too.
Yep.
And I think you can, in my opinion, tell the organizers that things are going to have to be drastically changed, and they have been doing that already with no parade and whatever. Now, the businesses, are they going to be eligible to give out hot cider and hot chocolate and things like this? That's going to be a question that the health department is going to have to give us.
That's my only concern.
And I, I believe we should have that answered, you know, as we move forward. We are still just two months out, Craig. Give or take a date. So I don't.
We could address this in November again. I mean, as of right now, we would love to participate if the rules allow us to participate.
Correct, I'm 100% for that, and if they want to keep planning it, then again, if they want to pull the, pull the rug from underneath it in the last minute because it's just not feasible, or it's not whatever, it's just not practical. That's what's going to happen, they have to understand that too. Because I was amazed, I watched the news this morning and again tonight, when there, I have some relatives in Wisconsin, when they're telling me they're almost shutting the whole state down again. It, it's coming this way. I mean, the whole upper Midwest, because we feel that it's not going to happen to us. But I hope it doesn't, but we can only be prepared. But yes, Mr. Mayor, I agree that they can proceed and we'll do our part, in my opinion, but to check on all the health-related rules and regs.
Okay, I will report that back.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Mayor?
No, I.
Not at this time.
Okay. Does everybody find it that way?
Yes.
Then we'll move on to department report, police report for this evening. Jason Bloom.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Start off tonight with monthly report for August. In Richmond, we had 101 total incidents, eight medical emergencies, six suspicious activities, 37 traffic stops with 13 citations, and 15 miscellaneous calls for service. One thing we've done lately is we teamed.
I'm sorry, can you, what is miscellaneous calls, service?
So in each codes of packet, there's a long list of all the different, and it's a breakdown, and I don't want to take up 20 minutes of your time going over those numbers.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
But if anybody wants what that breakdown is, I can definitely get it to anybody up in the public that would like to request that. But it's just a smaller breakdown, the ones I report are just kind of some of the bigger numbers that we deal with each month.
Thank you.
One thing we have done lately is we teamed up with the Recore School District, the Sterns, Betton, Sterns County, Benton County, TZD Coalition for a Buckle Up for Safety Initiative. They are putting their stenciling in Buckle Up for Safety in each of the entrance and exits of their school district parking lots. And with that, they're using RAD, Recore, against destructive decisions. And then they're also doing an educational piece through the Dare Officer for, or through our SRO, through to the Dare class, each of the fifth grade classes, just educating about safety here, wearing your seatbelt, safety conscious and that kind of thing. And I believe the RAD is also doing counts before and after those education pieces to see if that affects people wearing their seatbelts. So just teaming it up with them to try and make sure everybody's safe out on the road. The Save Station update, since the last time, the one, the lift station on the northwest end of town, Centennial Park and Cherrywood Assisted Living, the stands are all installed. I believe they're waiting for a little bit of electrical work to get done, otherwise they should be fully functional shortly. And then I've talked about it in the past, but counterfeit bills in the area. Officers recovered a stolen vehicle, which in turn located printers, washed bills, reprinted bills, up to, I believe it was just over $70,000 worth of counterfeit money that was recovered and turned over to the federal agencies. So there is a lot of it going on in the area. And with the washed bills, even if you're using the marker, they're washing $1 bills and reprinting 20, 50, $100 bills. So if something doesn't look great, take the time and give us a call. We can either come to the store, establishment, wherever it might be. But just take the time to make sure to train your employees, and if it's personal transactions, anything, just take the time to look at those bills. That's all I really have for tonight, unless you guys have questions for me.
Any questions relating back to the permit that we gave off for the bill, for the road?
Yes.
Okay. Are you going to be labeling that in here as a special detail?
It's possible. At this point, my intention would be to treat it like any funeral, family gathering, wedding, private party. Whoever gets that permit is going to be in charge of the numbers. If we get a report of there being issues, we respond and deal with those complaints as we get them.
I guess my question more is similar to River Lake Days where years ago, we paid up for officers for that, then it went into the contract for one or two special details per year. Okay, since if we're going to have Tremendous Night, which officers are always have been around, and River Lake Days wasn't used this year, but I'm just saying that we should possibly, if there's going to be an extra bill on that, send it to organizers of that. And if there is or not, please report it to us.
At this time, we haven't been requested to be security at the event, but as it comes up, we can take a look at that. But I don't foresee the city itself being billed for anything.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Jason.
Thank you. And good evening.
We'll move on to fire report. Chief Jesse Coleman.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Tessa. Start off, calls for September ended up with 10 medical calls, two fire calls, for a total of 12 calls. Last month's training, we went over small equipment operations and pump training. Went over like our education tool, grassroots pump, tanker pump, and our main pumper. People more familiar with everything. Truck detail, we got just a couple of small items needed to be replaced on the rescue truck, kind of like flashlights, batteries, et cetera. And also the auto eject on the, our main pumper, we've got to get, has to get replaced as well, it's not ejecting the cord, which in result, if it doesn't unplug, we pull it out of the hull, and it's going to rip the cord right out of the walls, so. Equipment, leaf floor's been replaced, a couple smaller fittings on the pump we found need to get repaired. And also, if you guys seen already, but we've had rims and tires put on a personnel carrier. Those were donated by Custom Wheel Outlet, CWO out of Avon. So it cost the fire department and the city $0 on that, so. FEMA grant, no news is good news. Obviously, they're about two to three months behind, so we're hoping for the best. I'll let you guys know as soon as we find something out. Washer and dryer cabinet is ordered and should be installed the week of the 19th of October. Electrical installers will be doing the wiring as well. And then as you see now up front, the bronze Maltese cross has been installed in front of the city slash fire hall. Actually, looks pretty, pretty sharp there.
Sounds really nice.
The stands, I like that.
And then coming up, hauling up the fire hall this year, it's still a possibility, obviously with COVID. Just keep an eye out for more information, we're looking at different options, ideas, so. And then other than that, my Brown with me, John Schmitz, he's our new member that just joined the fire department. So I just want you guys to introduce you guys to him.
Evening, John.
He has been responding to our calls, and he's been making quite a bit, and so far, it's going pretty good, so. He is already firefighter one and two, and has MATT certified. And then we'll get him enrolled and first responder as soon as the classes start opening up this fall.
Jesse, can I just, can I ask him to take his mask off for, just so that they can recognize him? It's kind of hard to recognize someone without a mask now.
He's six feet away.
I'd ask him to take his cap off, but no pun intended. So, but, so yeah, it's a, he's a good asset to us, so.
All right.
And then also, last but not the least, like always, our next fire meeting is the 14th of this month, so if anybody's interested, it's at 7 o'clock, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
Do you want to let them know what you're doing tomorrow?
Yes, thank you. We got a phone call, Mary Moose, School, Daycare, Childcare, asked us to bring a couple trucks down to show the little kiddos. So we're going to be pulling two of our trucks down with, I believe, four members offered. Short notice, we're more than happy to do it. It's just one thing different this year, the kids can't come close. So, I mean, we're going to try our best to, you know, get out there and just show them who we really are and whatnot, so.
Take a look at them from afar.
Well, it is fire prevention weed.
It is fire prevention, and we are doing the fire drills at school.
Oh, that's cool, that's great, that's neat.
But no tours at the fire hall?
Correct, no.
So is the sirens going to go off tomorrow for the schools or not?
The fire alarms.
Alarms.
Yep. So it's unfortunate, as a department, we always look forward to looking at Joy's and the kiddo's faces coming through. Unfortunately, not this year, so, but.
All right.
Pat, you have a question?
Yeah, what, it says your washer and dryer can be installed in a week and a half. What are you going to do with the old?
We haven't thought that far ahead yet. So the, obviously, it is, oh boy. You might know Pat better than I do how old that thing is, I think 96 maybe.
No, it's newer than that, but I'm just saying, it's been around for a little while.
Right, yep.
I just don't want to pay $100 to get rid of it.
Right, yeah, and it's.
And I do have an outlet for some of that kind of stuff, so. When you get prepared to do it, I think we can get something going and that way, take it off your hands, unless anybody else who wants to bid on it or put up or up and bid, whatever, and go on to their.
What we can do for the workshop is get the resolution ready to declare it excess property, and then from there, we can move forward with it a little bit easier.
That makes sense.
So we'll get that ready.
You could put it on the fire website if somebody's looking for one, that even if it's old, it might be better than what they have, if they don't have that candy at all.
We can talk about options once we declare it.
Absolutely.
All right.
And I just want to thank you guys again for giving us the opportunity to replace that, so.
Yep, it's worked out well.
So yeah, other than that, that's all I have.
Hey, thanks, Jesse.
Any questions?
Thanks, Jesse.
Good evening, guys.
Public Works report is in your, on your last page, on your file, on your packet. Other than that, council report, EDA, did you have a meeting, Mike?
Just a quick question here, just pertaining to Gordy's report. Did we, did we receive the plow truck?
Yeah.
We did, so that's here.
That's been parked up probably a month and a half now.
Considering, nobody's told us that, informed us that.
Yeah, no, I didn't know, I, you know, I knew you were kind of in process of looking at getting it and, and purchasing it. But I just didn't know officially if we took possession, maybe that's what the word I was looking for.
Yes, because Gordy even did a little work on the tailgate that needed a little sprucing, a prime box it, but yes, otherwise, we have it in our shop. So that would be another thing that probably at workshop, we'll have to discuss as far as what we want to do with the other one. If you want to keep it as having two drivers going, if you want to declare it excess property, try and sell it, you know, things of that sort. So we can discuss that further though.
Okay. Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor.
Another item on here is that I drove by the Items and Fur Avenue, and it's not, the dirt work wasn't done as of this weekend. And I believe that according to state and county contracts, things should be in place and seated by the 20th of October, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Or 20th of September, so something has to be done there very quickly.
Okay, sounds good.
Did we have a chance to get any of that stuff televised at the workshop? You said it was going to be done the following week.
From my understanding, what was televised, according to the People's Services report, was only the First Street, south and north. So I don't think we had them come back out and do Fur. I thought they were going to be looking at Fur with First Street.
Because we requested to do it to make sure that the pipe is in place in line.
Okay, we can get Nelson and Tom again, they're the ones who did it the first time, or have been doing the last couple of works. So we'll go back and come and get it done.
Okay. Any other questions on Gordy's report?
All right, EDA, did you have a meeting?
Yes, we did. We did have one on September 15th. Basically, what we did, there was just a few things on our agenda, so it was a really quick meeting. We did just kind of, Tracy Ryan, our development consultant that we've been working with throughout the year, we kind of went over our overall mission statement for the EDA. So it was one thing we kind of looked at, we want to make sure that we're on track for the remainder of this year and then for 2021 also. We did talk briefly a little bit about the Gilk-Tiff district terms that we've went over and talked about. That's the improvement of the Gilk property on Main Street. That additional piece of property that they will soon be working on. I don't know exactly what date, so do we have a date when they're looking at maybe starting a particular project yet?
Mm-mm, materials are the biggest issue and getting the Tiff actually finalized and done and in place and then materials I think are going to be their issue, what they brought up at the last council meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And then we discussed, then we discussed what we wanted to look at for 2021. What would be one of our goals and stuff too. And one of the things that we talked a little bit about too is start to invite the possibility of some people from the civic and commerce to our meetings, along with even some of the River Lakes people also too. I think we can kind of work together with the EDA and get some of their, voice some of their concerns, see what they have, and maybe there's some issues on the EDA that we might be missing that we haven't really looked at, so. We're looking into that. We're going to get back to inviting our businesses once again. We did that a few times at the beginning of the year. Obviously, the COVID-19 thing kind of, kind of hurt us, so we weren't able to invite anymore, but we are looking at that because it just basically gives us an idea from the local businesses and stuff too. We get a questionnaire to them, talk to them a little bit to find out their insights about what they feel about having a business here in Richmond and what can be improved and what they would also like to see from the city and the EDA. And then the last thing we did talk about too is one of our concentrations, I think, for next year in the EDA, it basically be taking a particular piece of property that is currently vacant in town and try to really look at seeing what we can do to push that particular piece of property and hopefully get a business in there of some type. And one of the things that was brought up at our meeting was where the fire and the grill restaurant were just sat vacant now for a while. We're trying to see what we can do with the help of Tracy Ryan to see if we can maybe possibly get something in that particular piece of property. So we're going to kind of really concentrate on that this next year along with a few other things, but that's all I have. Kimberly, do you have anything you would like to add that I missed?
You had everything.
Wow, I really did want to, but okay.
No, it was perfect. You went right in the wrong.
Okay, other than that, we do have another meeting coming up here on the 20th of October. Again, to 6:30, it will be here at City Council, it'll be right here in the City Council, not at the arena anymore. So right here. On that, anybody else have any questions?
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Planning Commission, there was no September meeting. The next meeting is scheduled for the 22nd of October if needed. Recorrie Trail, we touched on that already. Our next meeting date for the council is October 15th. Go ahead, Pat.
Just one item of concern here, how are we doing on the property East Main?
On the property of East Main?
Nuisance ordinance.
We're doing the best we can. We're watching, you know, taxes, we're the, our officer who does most of all, well, if not all of our nuisances is driving and watching and keeping an eye on things, the best that we can.
So they haven't been written up to or cited to clean up?
There were some, there were some things that were written up. I believe there was inoperable vehicles that either was moved or the tabs were put on. I think there were just a couple of other items that were pretty petty. I know it looks horrible as a property, but when you really get down and look at what it is and then look at our nuisance ordinance, it's not as clean cut just to get it all looking pretty again.
No, but according to what I've read, a nuisance ordinance has everything to do with scaling paint and everything else, even the outside.
Deterioration of the building.
Yes, yes. And I'm just, we're not going to let this drop.
No, I don't think, no, absolutely not, it shouldn't.
Because the neighbors deserve a little bit better scenery than what's going on over there.
I don't disagree. So I'll keep working with Officer Boucher on pushing it further.
So with that said, anything else to add for us here today? Our next council meeting is October 15th here at City Hall.
Do you want to talk about that date? Okay.
With that said, meeting adjourned.